All right, let's see. All right, I'd like to call to order the Youth and Recreation Committee Tuesday, September seventeenth, six P M. Please note all aldermen are present with the exception of Alderman Anastasia. And I just need a motion to approve the minutes from the previous committee meeting on Tuesday, August twenty seventh. Motion? Thank you, second?
Third.
Thank you. All those in favor?
I don't know.
Okay. So, couple unfinished business, I know we've talked about this in the past. So, the first one, to rename or reallocate the fifty thousand dollars in the fund that's right now named Franchot Park Entranceway. And so, Sonia and I met with the mayor, we went down to the park. And he is on board with reallocating those funds to do some beautification and modifications in the park. So, which we'll get to next. But, so I just want to do, put a P L in, I think we need to do a P L. So, I'm glad you're here, Lenz, because I was just talking about this at Tiffany. To do a P L to change the name of the fund, or to, from the entrance, just to Franchot Park. And then to reallocate those funds for the modification, the beautification. Do we need to create a new fund? I don't know.
Do we have to change the name?
I would say with a new auditing firm, but probably not her to do it.
Probably Charlie.
We like, yeah.
Well, let's just have a P L just to be safe.
Okay. Do we need to create a new fund or can we keep the same kind of fund?
Just change the name.
Just change, okay, change the name, okay.
Wait.
Put a P L to change the name?
Yeah. Just want to make sure we got it right.
Right, so we'll do a P L to change the name from Franchot Entranceway to Franchot Park. Anybody have any?
Franchot Park.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, if we need to.
Let's make it the beautification project.
Beautification project, there we go. Um, I don't know if anybody has any comments, discussion?
Something a little bit.
Producer, that money's been sitting there for a very long time.
Get something done.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the goal is to really make it much more, you know, having a grand entrance at the entrance where most people don't go through didn't seem to meet the community's needs. So, we believe that with this fifty thousand dollars, we can actually get all of the items done here. And I think the next piece would be, um, just thinking which department getting, um, taking this and getting some, some quotes and some dollar figures. So, there's a number of different things there, some which are more D P W in nature and some of which are more parks and rec in nature. So, I guess we will leave that to.
Just Ben.
What was that?
Probably just be Ben because parks falls under D P W.
There you go. Well, that's a winner then.
So, yeah, so then just as, moving on to B, just as you have in front of you, I emailed you. I apologize it came on Tuesday, but that was the best I can do. So, it really takes that fifty thousand and that existing fund. Um, and some of the things that will really enhance, um, just the aesthetics of the park, but also the visibility of the park. So, um, we talked to residents, you know, we met with the mayor down there. Just, uh, you know, reviving the basketball courts, so repainting them, patching them, removing the overgrowth, replacing the nets, getting the lights working. I think, you know, might draw more people to the park, um, some teams and, you know, maybe there could be some youth leagues and whatnot. Also, the safety with having the lights up and running, um, would be great. The trail maintenance, there's a lot of, if you've been there on the trail, there's a lot of, um, the weeds have kind of come up through the, um, blacktop. So, some weeding and patching just to make that more level, uh, surface for, you know, people who are walking or biking or cycling on there and running. So, just to reduce that, those falls. Um, the park improvements, so, or park entrance, so Green Street, just as I stated before, clearing out that entrance. Um, just making that visibly appealing as well. And then really looking into that, um, larger sign or archway sign at South Union and Franchot Boulevard. So, um, I mean, that's what people associate with the main entrance. Um, I think some signage as far as park operations and rules when speaking to residents as well is necessary. There used to be things there or a Q R code or something and that's been removed. But having it at all the entranceways, so, um, no smoking, no vaping, no vulgar music, loud music, park hours and operations. Um, no motorized vehicles, so a lot of those, um, uh, electric bikes and scooters are coming through there. Um, so just having those posted again, um, it's clearly stated, there's no question when, if there's violation and so then, you know, that leading to enforcement. Um, there's some dead trees that hang over the playground, so just some safely for the children that are playing. Um, lighting improvements, if you've been down there, there's lights over the horseshoe pits, there's lights over the basketball courts. Some of them don't have bulbs, some of them don't run at all. Um, so getting those up and running, um, again, is going to improve security during the evening hours for parkgoers in the evening. It could deter some vandalism and some inappropriate behavior that really, that disrupts the residents around there, which is one of the major complaints. And then again, it has, it creates a safer environment. Um, one of the major things that we want to do is the horseshoe pit there, to repurpose the horseshoe pit and, because it is underutilized. So, we already have an existing fence and everything and just make it a simple dog park. So, it really would just need some gates on the openings. Um, and stakes need to be pulled, the horseshoe pit, stakes need to be pulled. There's already lighting over there, so just getting that lighting up and running. And then, we already talked about the water fountain, but modernizing that with something that includes a dog friendly, like feeding water station there. Um, and so really all of these just increase the safety for the community. We want to have positive things going in the park and try to deter any of the inappropriate behavior that's happening in the park. Um, creates a dog friendly area, so more, you know, we're being inclusive to pet owners as well. And then just aesthetically, it's a large park, I know we've all used it through our childhood. There's a lot of, um, great things already happening there with the disc golf and obviously the pool. And so, um, I think we really have a lot that we can capture by just investing some money in. There's the short version. Yeah. First, you can go.
Uh, first, I love the idea of this park getting something done. Uh, this fifty grand has been sitting here since roughly after I came on board on this council. Uh, so that money's been sitting there and we still have no sign. Uh, and there are a few things though in your proposal that I'd like to highlight. Uh, first, I, I absolutely love the fact that, you know, this, this park, I first suggested when I first came on board that we should improve our parks, right? We should always look forward to doing something in our parks to give everyone here a place to go, a place to hang out, a place to take your family, enjoy yourself. But, of course, because I'm in Ward Six, the only thing I looked to improve was Marcus Park. I think this park deserves a lot more improvements than this, but I think that this is a start. You know, you always have money constraints. Uh, when you look at the basketball court improvements, I think that, that is perfect, that is something that can be done in-house. I don't think this is anything that we would need to send out an R I P for at all. I think this is simple. Uh, trail maintenance, uh, I differ a little bit. I know I ride that trail a lot and a lot of those issues along the blacktop all have to do mostly with the roots of the trees.
Yeah.
And those roots are, are deep into the, into the trail. And whether you're on a bike, scooter, if you try to skate, board, it's not going to happen, or roller blade, it's not going to happen. Uh, so I think that one is going to be, um, major cost, but it's well overdue. Uh, as far as the Green Street entrance sign, I mean, I understand the city's movement to try to get all of the parks to have the same type of signage. Uh, but I, I think it's been long overdue and again, it's an area that no one really uses anyway. Usually you're coming in the front or the backside. Uh, I, I think if we just go with what you have there, just beautify the area, that would be great. Uh, as far as the signage, I am definitely on board with the signage. I can't believe all of our parks don't have signage. I think we need to look at that and the, uh, sample that we saw in our emails from one of the constituents in your ward provided. I think that was a great example of signage that is currently in another city that lays it out completely. And then that also allows for police, uh, reinforcement also. Uh, then when it comes down to, uh, let's see, you know, the trees are always going to be an issue in a state or in a city where we call ourselves the tree city, but in all honesty, we have so many trees that need to be trimmed or cut down. Uh, and I think that all, to me, anyway, that all falls on the city to take care of. Lighting improvements, again, with the, we have a streetlight division in the city. I think that's something they could very well take care of, there's nothing that needs to go out on the R I P for that. Uh, you know, whether it's, you know, bulbs went and no ticket was put in to get it, you know, replaced or improved or whatever. Uh, we've replaced the, the downtown city lights. I know for a fact we replaced them all, four hundred, uh, watt high pressure sodiums and then shortly after, what even, what, two, three years later, we went to L E D. So, if we can find money for that, then we can find money for our parks. Uh, then as far as the dog park itself, uh, again, uh, it was introduced, uh, at Oak Hill and I truly believe that every park should have a dog park. Uh, when you go to the park with your families, uh, what do you do? You take your pet, you know, with your dog. And, uh, you don't want to leave your dog in the car or leave your dog, you know, at home, so you take your dog with you. And as far as the water fountains, I know we talked about that a couple of weeks ago, uh, maybe two, three weeks ago. And I said Ben, that, you know, it's, I think it's, uh, a shame if our parks are holding on to water faucets from the seventies and eighties, uh, I think it's, and I may be exaggerating. But I think it's time for those to all get upgraded. There are a lot better, uh, more efficient water fountains out there that work for both human and pet. Uh, and if need be, I think, uh, we should go to, uh, replacing those on a yearly basis, uh, whether it be two or three at a time or so forth. But I think we heard that they were roughly six, two grand each. I can't remember, something like that. But again, if we just went, replacing one, replace whatever line, provide faucets on multiple ends or at least two ends of the park, you know, uh, with, uh, the other part there, furnace, I don't think you should have to walk a quarter of a mile to get to a faucet and then turn around and walk back. Same thing with the bathroom, I think that's a bit ridiculous. So, uh, there's a lot of improvements we can do with all our parks. But again, I like, I like their approach that, uh, both you and McCall did for this park. And hopefully, we can get this done, you're going to need more than fifty grand though.
Right, so this is absolutely a start. And I think we also wanted to look at and talk with Carrie about, you know, what kind of grants are out there. Because one thing that we heard also is the, the playground, uh, floor, I don't know what we want to call it. But, yeah, uh, the ground carpet. So, it's, it's used as like a litter box for some animals, right? So, kids are playing in that, you know, and like stray animals are also using it. So, having some of that like s- spongy or that foam, I don't, if you've ever been to like the Portville Park, that type of thing. Obviously, that's a cost, but the play equipment is good. The residents like the older play equipment there, they, they like that there as well. Um, so I think down the road, if we can find some funding to do those and some other things that, you know, need a little more work that could be included in that, so, but that's down the road.
So, and our goal is to have the same signage about park rules at all the parks. So, we figured, we were starting here, but that, that is the goal, um, to have it in all the parks.
Uh, sorry, I'm late. Uh, so, good job, really good job on this. And I mean, I know we've, we talked a, a lot about a completely comprehensive plan, continuing the mission to improve our parks. Uh, I think, uh, this council's been an absolute pleasure to work with because we all have that, that mission. You know, I truly believe that people choose where they, they live. And, uh, sometimes your selections, your choices might be limited to where you work, but you get to choose where you live. And we, we want to support people living in Olean, thereby you got to invest in our parks, you got to invest in our communities and our neighborhood. And, and so that's the, that's really important. Um, I, I think, you know, what you have here is a, is a good vision, clean up what we have, fix what we have, uh, and, and, you know, let, let people use it, uh, let, let the youth and families use it. Um, I would encourage you to, I think that's a great repurposing of the, you know, the horseshoe area. The, the number one thing during my tenure here is, I, I hate to see that we upkeep park space that nobody uses. Um, and, and that was one of the visions that we saw about gargoyle, there's all this land and nobody was using it. And, um, and so now we've, we've revitalized that and we've turned that into, you know, the, the disc course. Um, and the same thing with, with Oak Hill Park. Again, that south side, it was unused. Uh, and now every time I go by there, people have their dogs there. Uh, the one thing that I would just be slightly cautious about, we don't really have any other quote unquote set dog park areas in the, you know, in the city, is, is stretching us too thin. I think, you know, to have two or three designated areas, awesome, it makes sense to have one in the south side of Olean. Totally agree with that. But, um, as for the basketball court, and this is hard coming from me because I grew up, um, Franchot was where basketball took place. But, we have a lot of basketball courts and doesn't make sense for us to, you know, it, it makes sense to have a small playground in every park, but doesn't make sense to have a blacktop basketball court. You know, couldn't be repurposed into something else? Um, we saw like pickleball court, and it, it maybe needs to be repainted. We saw a pickleball court, I see that being used a lot over in Oak Hill Park. Um, there's a lot of basketball courts over at, uh, the Warvex Park, there's a new one at, you know. So, I guess I'm just saying, I think we should be cautious on diluting the same features in all of the parks. Because we want people to go, right? And if, uh, three or four people go and play basketball at this park or this park, they all went to one park, we have some games. So, there, there are just some things like that that I would, um, offer some suggestions. Couldn't, could we repurpose that into something else, um, and get that space used again? But other than that, I, I wish, uh, we could get an update. You know, we, we've heard about the fifty thousand dollars, the new entrance for a long time, you know, and at this time, it kind of seems like a pipe dream. I would rather see that money go to, to fixing up what we've got.
Yeah, so we, Sonia and I met with the mayor and we went to Franchot and he is on board with reallocating those funds. So, so we just, before you got here, a P L will go in to do that. Uh, with the basketball court, I just wanted to say like that is one of the main things that the area residents down there love. And one, but as far as, you know, how one side is small, like just has the lawn hoop and then you have the court. You know, maybe it's the one side that you put in that in the middle, you know, going this way, and maybe that's like pickleball or whatever. And then you have the major court, you know, for the games and stuff.
Could it, could it, I think what the, what they did at, uh, Oak Hill is a, is a great concept. Um, I don't know if they could fix it up enough, maybe if that, maybe that would be too much money, I don't know. But, um, something similar to that would be good.
But I think that, that is a, I mean, I mean, you would, I don't know if you agree, but that, that was a, you know, they would love to see it just taken care of, so, um, they can have some games and feel, yeah.
And every time, I mean, when I have been down there, there's always somebody playing basketball there. I think, um, I think that that's important to the community there and the kids because we also think about Franchot has the, the waiting pool. So, during the summer, that's also another thing that, that they can do, go and play in and go, go splash in there. But, you know, maybe something with that other one, I, I do kind of like having that little separate one so that smaller kids could play over there if they wanted.
Is it lower?
Um, it's not lower, it's just a half, kind of. Um, but that might be something too, is to say, maybe we do make it more a little user friendly for smaller kids or something. That might be a cool idea. But I think definitely maintaining that, uh, the basketball court. And ideally, what we would like to see down the road is maybe some three-on-three tournament, right? Work on that. And there's other ideas in here that we haven't even touched on, like some additional shade structures for the, um, uh, park area. So, because it's hotter than, you know, what on the asphalt, um, and some different things, so.
Noise, there, noise barriers, but just, um, some things that would, if someone is in the park, having a party or having a gathering, which, you know, they're allowed to do, they rented the space. Um, you know, maybe it's a row of trees along, you know, that, that kind of separates where the residents are and, and where the pavilion is. I mean, we can't enclose the pavilion, but something that kind of reduces, um, some of the sound that travels out to the residents. Again, there's lots of ideas, but I think right now, working on what we already have and bringing that up to a level that, um, is welcoming and safe and, um, secure for the people who use the park.
The last thing I just want to echo because I agree totally with you guys, it's just that we have a consistent image, right? So, the same signs should go in in all the parks. And I even talked to, to the mayor too about, um, the similar, you know, style, you know. Um, we have on the trailhead down there and kind of even the, the name of Lincoln Park over here, just having that. So, I see that, that is on here, I actually agree with that. I think that's, you know, whether it's that entranceway, um, off of Green Street, just saying, um, um, Franchot Park. I, I think that's, just to have that consistent.
We're more thinking of archway and Franchot and Franchot Boulevard and Union.
Sure, sure, even better, even better. So, great job.
Yeah, the other thing, I, I was reading this review, your email that you guys sent out, uh, it's, it's a great idea, but, uh, this fifty thousand dollars that was allocated, is that, is that going to be enough money to do all these improvements?
Uh, I don't know, I mean, it depends on what they have to go out for bid. I mean, but it's a start and it's, we can do fifty thousand dollars of work now and go from there.
Yeah, it makes more sense to have the signage in the South Union Street versus the side street, that's the main entrance.
Agree.
But is, is this work going to be done in-house? I mean, have you talked to Ben and the mayor, is it going to be?
Uh, we talked to the mayor and so it's a matter of just seeing who's available and where, what they can do in-house. I mean, some, like, you know, Fred said, some of this can be done absolutely in-house. Um, you know, maybe some of the patching that's more intense might have to be taken out, I don't know.
Yeah, the other thing I was going to add, it's a great idea, but you, you have fifty thousand dollars that's going to be allocated and reused for this. But I, to me, it just seems like it's going to cost more than that, so maybe Ben could give you an estimate of what he thinks it's going to cost me to put it into the budget proposal for next year.
Well, probably will cost more, but the mayor is on board with reallocating that money for the sign, that was used for the sign. So, we're putting an A P L to reallocate that, um, to these modifications. And so, whatever we can do for the fifty thousand, then working with Carrie to find some grant funding for some other ones. And then, yeah, there, whatever's left over or that can't be done in-house, you know, maybe that's discussed for budget next year.
So, you know, I don't think, I don't know if we can put the archway we might like there on South Union with the budget we have. But what we can do is we can get a nice big sign that is welcoming and, um, is a whole lot more than what we have now, right? Like, we have nothing kind of saying, hey, Franchot Park this way. Um, so I think, yeah, if we wanted kind of the golden arches or the Taj Mahal of signs, as you might say, definitely we would be beyond our fifty thousand. But, um, it does go back to D P W then, for them to give us some, you know, what's this going to cost? And ideally, as, as Alderman Robinson has said, that it looks like many of these things can be done in-house. The, the poles are existing already, um, so at some point, there was electricity to them. Um, so we don't know if they actually work or if they're just out of light bulbs. But I guess that's something for our D P W department to figure out and come up with a, a quote for this for us.
I'm sorry to go back to this, but I, I somehow skipped over and I haven't highlighted, but the no motorized vehicles or bikes, this is a conversation we're going to have to have again. But we continue to, or we have a few that continue to bring that topic up. And, uh, want to jump back on that because when we get done with our walk of Olean and we're making these trails wider, there is no reason why these so-called shared use paths can't allow an electric scooter or a bike. Uh, we've already created a reactionary P L in the downtown district for bikes that isn't even enforced. And frankly, uh, again, I'm against pushing our children to ride their bike on Union when people still after years can't even maneuver a circle. So, I would rather, once we get done with our shared use path building throughout, if we're going to have all of these paths connect to a park, then you should be able to ride your bike in the park, you should be able to ride an electric scooter in the park, you should be able to share the path, so.
Well, maybe that should be like car, I don't know, because apparently cars drive all the way to the pavilion.
And while we were there, a mini bike went by.
Yeah.
And that's where we would be the police chief and some type of clarification for, I don't know, from the state or from someone on the difference between, uh, an electric scooter that doesn't have the power of a motorized two-cycle, two-stroke engine or whatever. I don't, I don't know however it's going to be worded, but I know I still ride my scooter when I come through town on the sidewalk. When I come up Wayne Street, I try to get to J C C, I still ride this sidewalk to cut up and go across. Um, and, and that's just me, I'm not saying everyone in the city should do it, but that's my way of getting from point A to point B. If I'm going to go out and enjoy the city, I need to be able to get around it. Doesn't make sense for me to cut into the street and then turn around and go otherwise. If I want to go from my house to this park, I could very well do so from our sidewalks and everything. But once I get there, then I can't ride, so I'm supposed to hop off and just start walking.
Well, I guess it'll matter like what the words are to be there.
Yeah.
So, I guess to deter cars driving through the park.
Yeah.
And, um, and like, I mean, we should, there should not be like four-wheelers going through the park.
I mean, you might have to just refer to the city attorney.
Yeah.
And to, to state law and determine what is the correct terminology that you use to.
Well, and I agree too, I mean, I think the electric bikes are, I mean, they're racing faster than my car, right? And I see them on the sidewalks too. So, I think that we have to be careful in terms of safety. of safety, shared, shared safe path, right? So, I think we can defer that, as you said, to the city attorney, um, and see what he comes up with with language regarding shared pathways, because there probably is something on there about what the expectation is.
And we have the signage that, um, was sent, which I thought was also a good sign, so we had, we saw that earlier on, um, a, you know, a few weeks before, as an example, when we were down there talking, so, um, you know, using something like that to model after and then making it meet like our, our, the consistency.
Jen?
Yeah.
What are the established park hours now?
Dawn to dusk, but we would like, because that's subjective.
That's where I was just asking, is the park closes at dusk, why do you need lights on everything?
Well, it depends, if you were having some evening activities, right? So dawn to dusk, but really, actually, you know what, the mayor told us it's ten PM.
Ten.
Right, ten PM, I forgot, maybe it's eight AM, we thought it was dawn to dusk, but I think he clarified that it was ten AM. Yeah, so being consistent with that and getting, um, that message out, that will also help to curtail, hopefully, some of the issues with late, later night loud music in this park in particular, um, you know, and then I really would like to see all our signs, like part of the issue with the signage in Franchot is it looks like it was made of particle board or something versus metal with maybe a QR code or something that, you know, people can kind of look, or maybe even then find out something more about our parks and stuff. So I think we can be creative in that piece, but I agree, I think that people need to know what the hours of the parks are. And you're right about that, right now, it's ten o'clock, so there, there could be some evening hours with the lights. Plus, if they're on, honestly, it, it could hopefully deter some of the, and the same thing with maybe Oak Hill and stuff, some of the, uh, late night activity that neighbors in the, in that area have been complaining about.
Interesting, gargoyles open till midnight. Just gonna say that there's an old sign there, on, on one of the trails, it says gargoyles open at midnight, the sign looks like it's a hundred years old.
So when you're finished at Franchot, go to gargoyles.
But don't ride your bike on the sidewalk to get there.
Be safe.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I've got a couple. Um, I mean, I, I think this is good, I think the park needs it, all these things have been kicking around for years. Um, I, I mean, unfortunately, I feel like most of these things that will be able to accomplish with this money should be budgeted in a parks budget yearly, and somebody at an administrative position that walks these parks should make sure these things get fixed all the time. Um, the other thing I would caution to, and may, maybe it's just dissolved, but there used to be a, a pretty good-sized horseshoe tournament down there weekly, and I do believe the group that did it was doing the maintenance while they were using it. Um, I mean, I can find out, maybe they've dissolved and they don't. Really? I mean, I know, yeah, I know the year before COVID, I think they were down there, but maybe they haven't been there. If they're not, it's just something to, to know, you may have a fairly large group of anger people if you pull their horseshoe tent.
It's a big enough fence in an area that you could still save two or three, just by putting a fence in between some.
Yeah, and the residents, the, the, you talked to said, they had not seen anyone down there, other than maybe once in the last couple of years or so. But I think you're right, if there is some group, then certainly can look at that.
That's all.
Um, so moving, um, forward, you know, this will go, she, you know, the mayor has this to see who, you know, what, who, what, and how these things can get started and get done, um, what can be done in-house by what department, um, and so, yeah.
And ideally, we would like to see this done, um, really early in the, the, the season, so that, um, the residents can enjoy it.
Jen, which area of ours is a, which area of that, that, that?
DPW.
Yeah, so not having everything done by September, next September, so nobody can really, you know, so.
That, that also reminds me, Jen, did we ever, did we ever get the shade structures?
So there's a shade, there's actual structure up there.
No, no, I'm talking about in the, in the sw- in the pool area.
Yeah, so there is, so what, they build the structure.
They build the structure.
Yeah, so it, it almost looks like it's on one side of the fence and the other side of the fence, so it's like half of it's in the pool, half of it's outside the pool.
Uh.
Um, and then there's some benches, and so we also suggested, it's not in here, but, um, adding, um, another one, like in a larger area, and also that everybody wants to lay in a lounge, so, um, or sit on a bench, so adding some maybe like just round tables or a picnic table with an umbrella in the larger deck spaces, um, so just gives opportunity for people to sit upright, so. Um, but yeah, it's, it's, I mean, I still would like to see the sales, cause I think we could spread that, we could extend that a little further, um, and, you know, we can manage it like you would manage an umbrella, right? Like you put it weighted in there and then it's put away as the end of the night, so. And we do probably have to revisit the bathroom situation, because, um, we couldn't actually see, find the porta-potties initially, and then somebody told us they were tucked in behind, and the mayor actually said, where's my porta-potties? We're like, we don't know, they're hidden somewhere. Um, so, you know, and residents had different ideas about, you know, what might happen to make that more feasible, so we should revisit that too.
All right. Any last comments, questions? Stay tuned. Um, okay, so no referrals for consideration, um, any reports, so motion to adjourn?
I'm sorry.
I, Sonja or Alderman, call, all those in favor?
All right.
Fine, all right. Well, it's nice to go first, can I leave now?
All right, I'll call the order of public safety committee for September seventeen. Let the record show, all, all persons present, uh, make a motion to approve the minutes, can I get a second? Second by Anastasia, all in favor? Codes, uh, unfinished business, we have none. New referrals is, uh, possible code change, uh, camping tents. Uh, this one was, uh, brought forth, uh, last week during, uh, what, as a committee hold, uh, I was not present, but I did watch the video, I do have some thoughts and comment into this one, so look forward to this conversation. John?
Yeah. Um, just a second, I'm trying to find my notes. Uh, so again, I, I'm, I'm still trying to touch base, I know there were some questions as far as, uh, working with, uh, the city attorney on, on this, um, working with codes, this is just further of a, um, a discussion item at this point, um, and so, you know, what we took a look at was the definition of temporary housing or temporary structure, housing structure. There, there really was no actual code that could allow any sort of, uh, ticket or enforcement of, uh, the use of temporary housing structures. And again, this is by no means of an attempt at, you know, trying to, uh, impede someone's ability to, to camp out, uh, with kids or, you know, let kids play in their backyard in tents and so on and so forth, but just like anything else, and in fact, you know, I, uh, I got an email from, uh, a resident on Henley Street who told me that, uh, a tent has been set up for, uh, a number of months in a side yard now, and, um, so more, I don't know, as the issue's been brought up more, I think more and more people are starting to, to notice these things in, in their community. Um, and so, just some, some wording that we can kind of wall over, um, and think about it for another day, um, would just establish a limit on, say something that would prohibit , uh, tents, residential front and side yards for, for more than fourteen days, um, you know, and, uh, something that would also include pop-up tents, um, and this would be related to private property as well as vacant property, uh, and then attach some sort of, you know, fine or code, um, I'm sorry, fine to that. That's, that's pretty much all I've got at this time, um, but I'm open, open to suggestions and comments.
All right, I guess that's my, uh, I, first, um, last week, I listened to the discussion that was mentioned on this topic, and, uh, there were good points by a lot of people, but I feel like a lot of you guys tiptoed around the obvious problem, and that is, uh, one, we have residents in the city that have created a outdoor recreation center with booze and music and tents and garbage and everything else in the front yard, and aesthetically, it looks horrible on the city, period. Um, whether there's code rules or anything in effect that could deter that, I don't know, uh, that's a job for professionals, uh, but if there's something there, then it's a matter of enforcing, period. Um, on the flip side, if I'm that resident, I don't want the city coming in and telling me what I can and cannot do on my property, it's my property. Uh, I've always stuck with that, I've always believed in that. Uh, I don't think, uh, no government should interfere with purchased property if they're paying their taxes, uh, but then again, to flip back, uh, I don't wanna be that next-door neighbor. If you're that next-door neighbor and you have that neighbor where you, you are constantly doing everything to make, to invest in your property to make it the best living space for you and your family, but yet your next-door neighbor is, uh, playing their music at any time of night, any volume, uh, out drinking, smoking, and anything else, uh, you, you tend to get upset, you get frustrated with the city, you get frustrated with the police, you get frustrated with codes, and we have a lot of that going on knowing, and it's all reflected on social medias, reflected when, when we go out individually, I, there's no one that sits here, doesn't have anyone come up to them with some comment about something that just reflecting on what I just said. So, with that, to change the code to fit the actual purpose of what we're looking to target, I'm perfectly fine with. To change the code to make it harder, that will affect other people that are just looking or normalized, I do have a major problem with, and that's what I do not wanna do with anything involved in this, so. Good example, your example again, the resident does not like the fact that the person had a tent up in their yard, if that tent isn't doing anything to them, it's in their yard, I mean, what are you gonna do with that tent? It, it's their tent, it's their property, uh, it may not look good in the front yard, but, you know, now on the flip side, if they're, if it's just garbage blowing in the wind every time we have a rainstorm, or, you know, they're out there partying, illegal bonfire, you know, stuff like that, then yeah, we have, we have a legit problem, so.
There, there is a, uh, there's a fine line, right? Between, we all, we all, I think, agree that we wanted to try to keep a semblance of order and, um, you know, cleanliness to a neighborhood and, uh, curb appeal and, and all of this, right? We, we all have had hoarders in our neighborhoods, or, uh, you know, again, why do we care then if someone has, uh, their, their house is not painted? Is that burning you? Why, why do we regulate that, that? That, why, why should, why should the government tell someone that their house has to be painted? Because there is an aspect of enforcing that, that curb appeal, right? And, and maintaining property values and all, and all of that type of stuff. And, and it's a fine line, a hundred percent, right? And that's why, you know, I'm not trying to create some sort of, or, or suggest that we need to, you know, crack down on additional things, uh, chapter twenty-five, we already, we already, we all already live, uh, prohibit the, the use of trailers, trailer camps, and setting up of tourist camps, right? Of temporary housing in, in those, uh, those means, right? Uh, the, we established that, uh, dwelling has to be built on a permanent foundation with a cellular, a cellar basement, et cetera, et cetera. So, we already have provisions in our code to say, you can't have a trailer as a, as a use of housing. What I'm focusing on is people now living in tents, not just going and camping out with their kids, but they've got some lives that, you know, like you said, I mean, they, they party it up and ten, eleven o'clock at night, they're, they're heading into the tent, I mean, I don't know what's gonna happen once the, the weather turns, right? But, but these tents are being used as permanent housing structures in some of these cases. And I think it's our job to, at the very least, just expand the use of, of residential tents or pop-up tents to the same code precedence that we have with regards to trailers.
Jer? With the code, I mean, you're, you're right, there's a fine line, but I think that you jumped well over the line, you talked about the garbage and stuff like that and the music. There's already codes and laws in place to handle that. The tent didn't do any of that, people doing it, so therefore enforcement's already there, that, that tent, and I get you, you have the question of, is it me sleeping out with my kids or is it permanent residents? Is someone gonna keep track of how many days it's been there? It's probably not gonna get, you know, it's probably not gonna get you anywhere, it's other than just that there's law on the books that doesn't meet the end result, and then we're gonna say, yeah, well, we created that law. If they're causing a nuisance to the neighborhood, there's already a noise ordinance in place, there's already garbage or cleanliness codes and that can be done, I mean, I don't, I'm, I'm gonna just go right with Vernon, like I, I told you before, I'm firm and can't tell them they can't have a tent there in their yard. Um, you can handle the other stuff with what's already in the books, just by enforcing it.
So I was gonna say, you know, I, I, I think we have to be careful not to develop the only home owners association that kind of terrorizes everyone, right? Um, you know, I think it's challenging, because we do want the properties to look nice, and as you said, Vernon, I don't wanna live next to the one that's got garbage and stuff, but I'm in agreement with JR that we have those things in place. And while it might not be the best scenario, if there's a tent there and there's people there and they're not causing a disturbance, and there's no problem or issue other than there's a tent there and people there, what's the flip side, right? If, you know, is it, is it just because it bothers us because we think that people shouldn't be living in a tent? I don't think people should be living in a tent, um, but at the other hand, um, that might be better than being on the street. I don't think that we have tent city with people coming in and just living in tents, coming from other places and stuff, so I think, you know, we have to be mindful, if we were more diligent in our enforcement of what we have, I think we might not even have this discussion, because I know a few of the properties that, that you're concerned about, and yeah, they look bad, you know? Um, and there is garbage, and there's other stuff around, and, you know, maybe that's where the ticketing and stuff goes through. I, I don't know, I, I think that we have so many things that need to be managed, um, by codes that need more attention, um, apartment buildings that are, have no windows on the second floor, and people apparently living in them with, you know, garbage trailers out in front and stuff, that for me, this probably isn't at the highest priority.
Yes, uh, I just wanted to, I'm, I'm pretty much on the same page as Vernon.
I just wanted to, I'm pretty much on the same page as Vernon and JR, I think everybody's feeling. One thing that, you know, if there's something important, if somebody's, who's air living in a tent, if there's something that's a nuisance of some kind, I would think there's, if they're causing some kind of problem, I would think there's something on the books. The only thing that kind of comes to mind, but I don't really, can't really think how it gets quantified, but if, if you were to have a massive problem like this get, wait, imagine the worst, you've got workload on our tax system that is now not realized through proper taxes except for everyone. So it would be everyone's thought that, because we all don't want tents in the yards, that we don't want a massive amount of people living in tents, because now we're supporting that many people, but we never meant to in the first place. So I'd like to see us be able to enforce our laws and codes as they are, and that take care of the situation. I think it has. I mean, I've seen ones pop up and people going down that road, and the police have an interaction and talk to them or whatever, and after a little bit, they're on their way to, I don't know where, hopefully, a better life. But I think that's been happening, maybe we can find out from someone, you know, that's not dumb, working at that level, what they think about it. I'd like to hear what the police department says.
Jared?
I was just gonna ask Ryan, who's here, to jack the point, isn't there something with non-residents? So the problem is, is that people are setting up tents on other people's property, real property. Isn't there something already on the books to address that?
Yeah, really? I mean, your, your fire court doesn't really-
Can you speak into the mic? Oh, please, Ryan, I'm sorry.
Your fire court doesn't really kick in until you get over four hundred square feet of levels for temporary membrane obstruction. I mean, if you wanted to push this, maybe they have a rental dwelling unit on their property, because they're renting it out?
I guess that's what I was asking Ryan about, like, if somebody's not the homeowner, residing in a tent on the back of somebody's prop- property, isn't that already enforceable?
Not off the top of my head, no, no, so, yeah.
But then those, that's great, but maybe a way we could go, if you're not a property owner or a tenant of their property.
But if you're allowing, why, why would we want government to tell who you can have staying in your backyard and not staying in our backyard? We don't want government doing that, right? You should be able to allow whoever drinking buddy wants to live in a tent.
I mean, I agree with that, if they behave themselves and keep the place picked up.
I, I think it's good for our community. You know, but, but listen, I, I love the passiveness in this, and, and it's not that I'm like totally passionate about this, but everything we ever hear about is that we're not, that we're reactive, right? That we're reactive as a government. Why, what, like, these tents are popping up, why do we, why are we not proactive about it? I don't see how, and I, and I can think that it's a slippery slope in that when I reached out to, after getting a complaint from a resident, and I'll reach out to codes, and they're like, Ryan, is there anything that can be done about people living in a tent in your yard right now as it stands?
Not much.
Do you have something that you can go and be like, this tent's been here for like two months, and you got people living in it?
The tent specifically, no.
Okay.
Unsanitary conditions, stuff.
Unsanitary conditions?
It's usually out of your code.
Okay. But if they're sanitary, if it's a clean tent, and, and that's, that's my only point, right? There is an absolute fine line between having government tell you how to live your life versus keeping an orderly society. I don't know, but, but, and, and that's the only reason for, for bringing something like this up. We do already regulate temporary housing in other conditions, and I can only think of three. Personally, I can think of three that are in, in my ward or bordering my ward. But if you guys aren't getting complaints about it, then maybe it isn't something that we need to consider, we're worried about now, and that's, that's totally fine. But I, I just, I hope that this isn't something that, you know, is a slippery slope that will creep up on us, and then next summer or something, then it is a problem, and then we're stranded.
So here, I'm raising my hand for my own committee.
You, Vernon, you go.
Yeah, I can go, okay, thanks. So this is a slippery slope, I believe, and it, the city is reactionary. It's, it's, this topic, I've gotten the calls on it, and, you know, I've talked to the residents, and I always say to them, you know, and I give them that scenario, what if you had something going on on your property and, and your next-door neighbor didn't like it, and now we're trying to create legislation to regulate what you're doing in your yard, you know? And when, when you present it, usually if you can put the shoe on the other person's foot, however that slogan goes, you can usually get them to understand what the situation is, you know? And, and I agree, we do have an issue, we do have an issue, but how do we attack it? How do we go about making the necessary changes to where we're not affecting those that are living their everyday lives? That, that is the approach that I would like to take. And JR and John, you both got to Ryan before I did, so I guess I'll ask another question. Ryan, do you have a suggestion to where there is some code that we can update or amend that would help with this issue, or is this something that you would have to sit, think about, or go look at what's available when you come back?
After a quick search on ECO three sixty, I'm looking at other cities, I didn't find anything that jumped out at me, it was basically referring to public lands and tents on public lands. If you were to add it into the code, what you get the wording down, I would keep it in the tourist camp part section that's there, because it does, it refers to trailers and cabins. We've tried to use that section in the past, and we got thrown out of court against the tent, because it doesn't, it has nothing to do with that.
So.
It's more sort of like you're popped and pre-built shut on somebody's property and rent it out as an Airbnb. That's what the determination of that code was.
Derek, John, in your, just backing up, I want to clarify, in the example where you talked about the neighborhood impact, was the homeowner allowing these people to stay in said tent? Okay, that's what I was, I wasn't sure what you were meaning, like they just put the tent up, that's why I was like, that's called trespassing, like.
No, 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 the, the resident, no.
But then, one, except for, like, there's currently laws on the book that go back this enforcement arm, there's currently laws on the books that say you can't set up tents on the Dyke system, and there's tents all along the Dyke system. Like, you know, that's, so there's something there? Comes back down, do, do we have the means to enforce that?
Well, do we have the means to enforce it? If, if we have a law on the books, do we have the means to enforce it?
That ordinance doesn't follow under right jurisdiction, so I'm not sure.
Good answer, Ryan.
Huh?
It's a good answer.
So where is that code? Then if it's not in code enforcement, where is that?
I guess it's more of a question, Zion, if I would like.
Oh, I thought you meant that there was something already on there for the Dykes.
It was an assumption, I'm pretty sure, that DC probably has, that says you can't set up camps on our Dyke system.
Okay. So again, we could go back to our city attorney and ask him to research that, is what I'm hearing. Right? Because if we are having a problem with tents on our Dykes, and we think that perhaps the state has a vested interest in us not having tents on our Dykes, then we could ask the city attorney to look into that one also, I'm hearing. Okay, so maybe Tiffany, we could put together a list of the issues that we've identified for the city attorney, so that at our next meeting, when, when he's here, that we could hopefully get some answers.
So just on that topic there, so we got an email, just to let you know, there's a new tent encampment along the Dykes, it's behind the pines, the police have been advised, but we continue, because we walk along the Dykes, it continues to be there. On Friday, when we walked by the encampment, one of the individuals started to harass the people that we were walking with, so.
So that's a police issue then, it's harassment, right? And so my question would be, you know, have they called the police? Because, I mean, the police can't do anything if they don't know.
No, I, I can say just because the city attorney handles local charges, there was an issue with a couple who were living in a tent, the Dykes, and they were both ticketed with prohibited disposal, voiced it was a mess. That is what we could take it down with at that point, in terms of not camping in the Dyke system, that's something that the United States would regulate, I'm not sure what the laws would be, we can turn a little into it, but it was difficult to, and then we tried writing to court, they don't show up, we can get a default judgment against them with the local law that's hopefully passed next week, but then, it's just, it's something that's very difficult to enforce, because they're homeless, we can't send them notices to come to court, we never see money out of them.
I mean, if not, who says that you can't live in a tent?
Dyke mile marker one forty-three.
All right, well, so, thank you, Zion, for suggesting we send a lot of those questions to the city attorney. I think if, if we can get answers to those questions, that would be great. As far as the regulation of the Dyke system itself, just rhetorical question, if the police are sworn to uphold the law, to me, it seems that it wouldn't matter if it was local, federal, or state, that that's a police matter. So, but again, you run into those obstacles that, that Tiffany had brought up, so, I guess this one can just stay on unfinished business, and we can come back to it in a couple of weeks and see if we have any answers from the city attorney, and to, that'll also give Ryan an opportunity to see if maybe there is something out there, suggestive wise, that maybe we can update or that will follow up to those concerns that we mentioned. Anything else, other than a statement?
No, I was just gonna say, since they're gonna refer it for two weeks, if we could send a notice to Jack Hart and Ryan and police chief to attend the meeting, so we can get the answers, just to keep referring things back.
That's a good point, yeah. If, if possible, if Ryan and Jack Hart and anyone else has needed to cover any of these issues, the police chief, that would be great, if those individuals could show, hopefully that gets over to the mayor, and then the mayor can make that happen, I'd be appreciative.
Just, just to follow along on that, real quick, so we, let's see, Jack Hart did respond, and, and just to clarify, the city does have the power to regulate tents on private property, and he said he's reviewed various examples where it'd be possible, so I'll ask him for those examples, just for our reference.
And that one code though, he did send, remember, he did send the one example?
Yes, correct.
But that was not-
That's for you, remember.
I'm reading it, it's nothing to do with sleeping tents, it was the car garage, the carport garage membrane structures, but it did not include sleeping tents whatsoever.
Which, I mean, is there a difference? I mean, somebody chose to regulate carports or tents, I mean, it's still, you know, I understand they're different, but are they?
Right, well, I think we want to be careful we're not gonna get into somewhere that's gonna cause problems.
Yeah, it goes back to that slippery slope again, where, I mean, even if you cause it to slip quarters to make it broad, you know, now you're saying no one can sleep in certain things outside, you know, so it just becomes a slippery slope again.
And that's why I think it'd be helpful to hear from, from the police department or codes in more detail, as far as like, where's the problem, taking care of where the problems are at, right? Like, what do people complain about, and then what's the problem, getting them a solution? And I think the people that deal with that every day, they're gonna have an idea. I know the police have taken care of a couple that I've been involved in, and they're able to, and they're gone, I don't know where they're going.
And I, I mean, to me, the most relevant concern that I've heard is the fire chief saying, these people, we have a homeless problem, we see probably a percentage of it from those who may walk up and down our streets, but there's this additional population that we don't see that are living in a tent in somebody's backyard, or in the side yard or in the front yard, and now you start to, if you start to shudder them, if we give it, you know, we may create another problem, right? So, so I'm, I'm not naive to that, I think that's a, a very relevant concern. If all of a sudden we tell, you know, you can't have your drinking buddy hanging out, living in your tent, in your, in your side yard, then that, you know, homeless person possibly ends up on Union Street, right? So I mean, we don't have the homeless task force yet and so on, but these are concerns, right? They've been set up with social services or whatever. So I, I am talking some of that, I think that's something we'll need to take into consideration.
All right, well, we're gonna bring this back again in two weeks on unfinished business, and hopefully we will have some answers to those questions and those individuals that were requested, hopefully they can show for that meeting. So, moving on to approval committee, committee reports, we have none, so I'll make a motion to adjourn, can I get a second? Second by venue. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or adjourned?
Okay, I'll call together the finest committee meeting for Tuesday, September seventeenth, make sure that all aldermen are here, approval of the minutes from previous committee meeting, which was Tuesday, August twenty-seventh, and Tuesday, September third, because we didn't have the twenty-seventh available for us. I'll make a motion to approve, do I have a second? Second by Robin Robinson, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, unfinished business, we have a few things under here, and I think Brad is here to, to speak to them, yes? Okay. The first with the RFP, no bids received, I know we talked briefly about that, and you were gonna go back and see kind of what?
Correct.
So come on down.
So we had three firms reach out and get bid packets, I have been in touch with two of them, one of them, they had a contractor back out of them, but they weren't able to submit a bid, they are still interested in working with the city, you know, to try to complete this project, we're still interested in putting this up to bid, which we can get to that later. I did reach out to the other one, I talked to them late last week, they had some senior level engineers leave the firm, start their own company, so they were having trouble getting the packet together because of staffing issues. They too are interested in, in the job, so, you know, there, there is interest out there. I did not hear back from the third one, I will, I'll reach out again and try to connect with them, but, so that's where we're at with the INI setting.
So Brad, at, at this point in time, and quite honestly, I mean, if you've reached out once or twice to a company, do we really want a company that doesn't have enough to call you back? I don't know.
Right.
But it sounds like there is two companies that would potentially be interested. We need to have the work done, right? We're interested in having the work done at least.
Right, yeah.
So do we, what do we need to do to put it back out?
It wouldn't take a lot. I did speak with one of the friends, I have some suggestions on maybe a different approach. We could look at that, we could kind of, you know, kick things around, polish it up a little bit, put it back out for RRQ or RFP or competitive bid, whatever we want to do. But, you know, that, that's up to you guys, on how you wanna approach.
Do you have a recommendation?
Yeah, I would, I would probably put it back out for a proposal.
Brad, a lot of this is gonna be to study, to look at causes of the overflows, right?
Yes.
So I need to get into that, the storm.
Sources of inflow and infiltration, specifically that are in the grav- Sources of inflow and infiltration, um, specifically that are in the gravity systems of our stations that have the capability of bypassing to the river.
Okay, so with that being said, I know that there was formerly another INI report on, a number of years ago. But is there any verification that the large number of catch basins were remedied from that report?
Is there evidence that it's done? Um, no, I, it's actually quite the opposite of that. There's evidence that not all of them have it.
So, I guess, so I guess my question is, you guys are talking about, I'm not blaming you. There's discussion of let's do an INI report, why don't you just go back to the one a number of years ago? Do the stuff on that before you go spend money to have them tell us the same thing that was wrong back then? I look at it, I'd say the same money that could be sent us. INI report that would redundantly tell us the same catch basins could then lend financial burden of replacing the same catch basins.
That is, that's possible, I'm sure.
Alderman Robinson.
Brad, knowing, knowing this, 'cause that's good to know, knowing that there's, if INI study already completed, granted, whatever amount of years ago it's been, wouldn't it make sense for the city to, I don't know, assign X amount of individuals to take that list and go out and verify if anything was done with each one of those? And then that would save us probably a ton of money on going, like JR said, to go and do the same exact thing over and over. I mean, this seems to be a simple one now, instead of going back out for an RFP, maybe I would just go in-house and have the city go and look to see, hey, was this completed? Was this completed, and then go down a checklist and find out what's done.
So, my recommendation for that is, uh, is, number one, I agree, um, I think our money could be best spent addressing the issues that we know in the study that was done from ninety-nine to two thousand and two. Um, dye testing and smoke testing, uh, results that we have. We have hundreds of potential sources of INI already identified in those reports. So, I think it would be hard to go down through each one of them to try to verify whether it's connected or not. I think that should be included in the scope of an RFP to take our existing study and verify those sources have a firm or, or contract come in and verify those sources that are already identified in that study of whether they're connected or not connected and then remedy those.
That's, so that, that's not anything that we can do in us to see if those were corrected?
Well, there's hundreds of them. I think we can do some of them, you know, I think it would be good to look at, um, you know, maybe fifty of them and, and look at those, but to go through the whole list, um, I mean, the, the list is long. You know, of, of catch basins and, uh, roof drains and holes in yards and.
So, if we did this, I'm sorry, if we did this RFP and this, uh, any company was selected, about how many employees would you think they would send to do this study?
A firm?
Yes.
Maybe eight?
Eight people? So, and that would result in us getting it done faster, so if the city did it with a third of that, then we'd get it done maybe by next year, but at least we have in-house, less money and instant results, whereas if they wait on the company, we're gonna wait until they're completely done, wait, what, a month or so for them to get their results and do their analysis and all the other things that they do before they get us an answer, and we're a long ways down the road. Whereas if we did it in-house, a little bit at a time, maybe we can start planning on getting some of those done. I don't know, to, to me, there's a more actionable plan.
Sure.
I guess that's where I was, I was headed, I just don't see the point in doing an INI report to come up with a list or something that hasn't been done in the last twenty-two years now. All it's into is give us a list probably with repeat things on it that, that you still have to take action. Take action on what you already know, and then if it continues to be a problem, then we can take the next step, but. I know you said it'd be difficult, but I mean, through, what would you have to do, like dye testing and then see if you see it down a couple manholes away or something?
Um, if, if we did testing.
If you tested in-house, like, if, if the catch basin on that front street was identified, would you just put like dye and then go down the manhole and see if the dye comes down?
Yep. You have to see if like a, a, a stormwater catch basin or anything is, is tied into a sanitary. Yes, we do dye testing and we, we check a manhole down a certain.
Okay, that's it.
I, I, I guess, I'm trying to understand and, and play devil's advocate, but do we just have like a crew of people just sitting around that are, just don't have anything to do? But to go like, we have like failed infrastructure all over the place and like shit's hitting the fan, no pun intended, like every day with water line breaks and stuff like that, so who is going to go and do all the dye, this proposed dye testing on hundreds of, of homes? Who would, who would do that? Do we have people to do that?
You'd have to.
I mean, I, that's, that's a recording, I mean, I don't think we do. And, and so that's my, that, I guess that's my, probably why we do need to hire a firm, because we don't have that. I, I, I mean, I, I would think that if we had that capability to do it on a large scale, we would, we would be doing it. Don't, but I don't understand why we, you know.
So, to your point, you're, you're right, but it doesn't have logical sense. If you buy a house and you have a home inspector, a home inspector comes in and tells you these twenty things are wrong, okay? Whether or not you have the time to do it yourself or you're gonna hire it out to remedy those twenty objects, right? And you do absolutely nothing with it, and you wait twenty years, and then you have that same home inspector come in and say, what's wrong with my house, he's gonna give you the same thing. So, to your point, do we not have the staff here to do it? No, but isn't the money still then better spent to hire the firm that could come in there and do it, what we already know is wrong? Why do we have to hire somebody and an obscene amount of money to come in and tell us the same catch basins are leaking? And then when it's identified, we still don't have the manpower to fix it, so we still have to pay someone to fix it. Then just come up with the action steps to bring in a firm to fix what's identified?
Because I, I, are we proposing that the city is going to pay to remedy what's a law books? That people are supposed to do as, as homeowners?
These are, these are catch basins in like roadways that are running into the sewer system that are taking rainwater. When you get two, three inches of rain and some of these catch basins cover right on ten thousand square feet of area or a large amount of area, when you put that much water, that water is going into the treatment plant rather than going through the stormwater system.
So, is this, is this test of the INI, both the catch basins and the downspouts? The disconnects?
It's both, correct.
This, it's any INI source, so it's roof leaders, the catch basins, and some homes which is from, we don't find through dye testing, smoke testing, but through property turnover, especially if we can do that.
So, to, I mean, to JR's point, we don't know internally what our own drains in the, in the roadways, if they are tied into the sanitary?
Well, that's what the report tells us, that some of them are tied into sanitary.
So, are, 'cause to, to your point, those concern are gonna change in the roadways, but the ones I'm concerned about are the homes that are attached to.
So, two things, number one, you're getting far more through the large number of catch basins square footage twice than you are through roofs, but also in that list, the roof leaders were already identified, so therefore somebody could go out and verify that the, what, what number of houses were identified through roof leaders, Brad? Just approximately, that won't be more.
How many, how many homes were identified with roof leaders kind of?
Yeah, that one there, that whole report, how many homes were verified?
Oh, I don't know, but quite a few.
And I guess that's my question is how do you verify, like, what team of people would verify that? We don't have.
Close verify via the smoke testing.
Back then.
Back then.
But that was twenty years ago.
Right, yeah, so, you know, some may have disconnected between now and then. Um, we could, we could do a dye testing house, put dye in the downspout on the corner of the house, pour some water there.
What would you get from this? What would you, what is the end result? How does that play out, so if they, they run the tests, they give you a new report, and what happens with the new report that's different from the old report?
So, a new report, let's say, um, let's say we find a connection or type of problem.
Okay.
We give them a certain amount of time to fix it, say thirty days, fifteen, whatever the case may be. They have that much time to fix the problem. If they don't fix the problem, we do have language of code in the states, once we notify them, we can then charge them rate and a half for their, uh, sewer problem.
So, would it not perhaps make sense, since we have the list of all the homes, to take that list, send it to the property owners and ask them to show documentation that they had corrected it?
I agree with that.
Right, because that takes care of a portion with very little, right? And then you could, as time permitted, go out and, and do it, because some people are not honest, but.
It's code, you know, code officer.
Right?
We vary, we do well about DPW and that we verify some homes and leaders on D transfers. If we find them on leave or on D transfer apartment inspections, then yes, we come back and we notify DPW there's the houses that still haven't been connected.
Okay, so a portion of those are already known and potentially fixed then? Because code for deep changes has gone.
If those ones that were identified on the INI report with through a D transfer or rental inspection, then yes, possibly they have been identified.
And remedied.
And remedied.
So, would it take then, for this small portion, take the list of homes, codes could look at it and they would hopefully know which ones had been remedied? And that would give us a smaller list to look at, trying to look at what, what makes sense to brush off and. The other thing we, we could do is also do a random, you know, pick fifty of those, right?
Yep.
That are there to just kind of get a rampant sampling of the catch basins and stuff. What is, you know, are we still seeing it to get the figure overall issue too?
To, to muddy this even more, I would even, I would even be supportive of hiring an external contractor or whatever you wanna call engineer to take the old list and to go around. And, and I guess I don't understand why it's necessary to do a new test if we do have a list, but I understand we have a lack of manpower to go and verify whether or not the disconnects have happened and so on and so forth. Um, that seems to be the bottleneck, that we don't have the manpower to do that.
We don't have the manpower? That was a terrible question. I think the city has the manpower, I'm just gonna say it. I think they have the manpower, I think they can do it. We see these guys running around their home time, fours and fives and sixes, even when they're fixing the, the pipe in the ground, these six guys fixing the pipe forest there, they have the manpower, I think it can be done. We need to stop bleeding the city that doesn't money for this test and that test. Do the damn test, get the city to fix it, let's move on, period.
Alderman Pianas.
Uh, some of the things I'd like to mention, so most of the time when you're dealing with your normal homeowner, so you're talking some pump or roof drain. If we enforce something, they're just gonna disconnect their roof drains and have them dump a couple feet out of a bleeder pipe in your yard or next to your house or whatever. Um, if you have some pump that doesn't go into the sewer, then it must also just dump out near the home somewhere on the ground. Uh, which in my house, if it doesn't go down the drain, it leaks through the walls of my basement and goes through the basement drains. And I imagine many houses and only in that's what's gonna happen. So, even if you do the work, when you make people comply, you could still end up with the water in your sources.
I'm changing my opinion.
Again, John?
Yeah, I'm changing my opinion. I've been sitting next to Dave for far too long. You know what? You know what? If this is your house, I'll be damned if government's gonna tell me to disconnect my stuff. I'm, I'm keeping it connected because I'm not letting government tell me what I can and can't do in my property.
We'd like your gavel now. Okay, so in all sincerity, we do have to give some direction here. It sounds like the recommendation is for us to look to take the old report, um, look at what we were told. Listen, I've gone through site inspections before and, you know, the state, when they come back and they have to tell you, like, this is the same thing we told you in your last licensure. Typically, they're not super happy, right? So, my sense is, it sounds like we had a report done. Probably the people who are here now had nothing to do with it. Nothing really got done with it that rectified the situation, so here we all sit trying to figure out on a twenty-year report what to do. My thought was to, I actually am not into the, I think the thought even about saying who, who can do it. I think we need to send it back, um, to the mayor with our recommendation that we look to do in-house, take the old report, review it, see what's there. Codes work with DPW to see which houses were rectified and, yeah, some of it might still end up in there. But making sure that we've, all the houses that were identified have, have, um, made the changes.
I just wanna remind everybody that it is part of the PEC consent order to remove stormwater from the sanitary and, um, the INI business is part of that. So, it does, it does apply to the PEC consent order in reducing or eliminating excessive INI in the system.
So, does the state have any money available to help us do that?
I'm, I'm sure that, um, there is, I'm sure that there is through grants and how we go about, um, how we go about rectifying this issue will kind of determine whether or not we can, or how we apply, how, how you can secure those funds.
Alderman Robinson.
So, you just mentioned that this was mandated, so if this is mandated and the test was done in ninety-nine to two thousand and two, how come we're in twenty twenty-four and a lot of that stuff wasn't done?
Because at the time, the state recommended that we put our effort towards the treatment plant to handle the flow, so it was kind of a, uh, I guess, pronged approach. So, the initial, initial focus was on equipping the treatment plant to handle, uh, a larger amount of flow. Now, we went from seven million gallons a day to twelve million gallons a day. Now, when we get a rain event, we could see nearly thirty million gallons of instantaneous flow due to INI.
So, with that, we paid for a study and then the state said, do this. And that was, was or was not part of the study, but either way, the other corrections were completed. And now we're looking at doing another study to where there is potential for someone else to come by and say, hey, Ollie, do this instead, this will get this done. I mean, again, knowing now that we have a study that was done, to me personally, I, I believe that we should be able to do this in-house and, and, and that's it. Uh, if we focused otherwise from the previous study, that's fine. At least we were able to make corrections, but now we're looking to finish up on the previous study by what wasn't done. And I think if we already have that documented, then the least we can do is save some funding and, and work on getting those areas checked again before jumping into another study.
Brad, just for drinks, is there a way to just in theory pretend that none of them catch basins were remedied, okay? Is there a way that you could calculate in a two-inch rainfall, the amount of gallons of water that then would be going into the system?
Well, I can just give you a quick, I mean, just our.
Well, I can just give you a quick, I mean, just our average flow is, say, three million gallons a, a daily today. And then we get two inches of rain and our flow goes up to eight million gallons, five million gallons.
I get that, but I'm saying it can be attributed to just the catch bases.
Uh, I have no idea. I would have to go through the report, see how many catch bases are in there, what side of the pipe they're connected to, and then do some type of determination of, you know, based on, you know, an eight-inch pipe with two inches of rainfall, you know, it, it could be figured out.
So I guess in your opinion, if we fixed the identified problems in the old report, could it lend a hand to remedying the problem of the overflows?
Yes.
So I, I guess that's why, for me, it's just, there's what's identified.
So, do you have something?
Yeah, or, when you talk about catch bases, are there actual streets whose drainage goes into the sewer instead of a storm drain? So I mean, I think ninety million percent, those have to be, we have to do that, we have to fix that.
So those?
Have we ever had proposals to fix those?
I, I don't know what happened back in two thousand and two with the initial study. So I'm assuming what happened was, they did the study, they got a price to remedy all of it. The price was high, they thought our money would be better invested into the plant to handle a larger amount of flow and then come back and address the INI sources, um, which is what the consent word says from the completion of the treatment plant. To twenty forty-two, I think, is when we're kind of off the hook as far as chasing down INI sources. So like now, we're spending two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year on sewer line. That's great, but the majority of the, um, INI is from inflow, I believe, like basins or roof leaders or some pumps or whatever the case may be, instead of really groundwater infiltrating through cracks and things, which happens. But we see it almost nearly instantaneous when it starts raining. So that tells you it's not infiltrating through cracks.
Wait, do you, go ahead.
Do we have, if there are streets that dump the storm drains into the sewer, do we have that quantified where we know? Or is it kind of unknown as to which ones?
We know there's a few.
And there could be more that we don't even know?
I'm sorry.
There could be more that we don't even know without doing some kind of testing?
Sure, yeah, there could be more.
So it's not all identified in that two thousand and two?
No, I don't believe that everything is identified in, in the old study. You know, if I had to take a guess, I would probably say eighty-five percent of.
So I mean, my thought is, as a city, it would be our diligence, if there are any streets that dump any storm drain, any of the basins that are in a street shouldn't go into the sewer. We should spend money to fix that because we're spending money treating the water even when there's normal flow. Addition, I've been in, I've been in the city my whole life. I can remember when this happened. I was, I was a teenager, probably just about done with high school. Most of the storm drain, you know, there wasn't after, people had to disconnect their storm drains. Most of them got reconnected because of what it did to their basement or their neighbor's basins when it rained. Even when it wasn't heavy raining. Because that's, people were gonna fix the problem and nobody's enforcing. So I feel like the solution needs to be one that gets results, even if that means like we do something like the sidewalk program where we're putting some money on the line to actually have contractors dig things up. We're allowing connections into the storm drains. But are storm drains even in a condition that can handle, like, will they be able to handle it if we do it? You know, what kind of condition are those in? If we start, let's say we actually got people to reconnect and connect the storm drain system, could it handle making the connections and then the flow?
In most of the areas, yes. We already see localized flooding in some lowline areas, um, you know, some, some pinch points, I guess you could say, in, in the storm system.
Like, I know, like the town of Portland's neighborhood where, uh, that creek is, that would be a problem and any flow to that. I imagine some of that down there is probably part of the problem with streets that are going to the sewer. I mean, it's probably out there, but down there's probably, they did it just to get the flow out of there.
A hundred years, which is roughly, what, twice a year?
So my recommendation would be that we send this back to the mayor and to DPW, to Brad, and then ask them to come up with a proposal for going back, reviewing the nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand and two, and come to us with a plan as to how they're gonna go through and rectify the issues that were identified there. And if that gets rid of eighty to eighty-five percent of the issues, maybe we do need to have something on a smaller scale after that. But to re, to send it back out for somebody to say to us as Joe has, hey, look, look, this is it, you didn't, you didn't do it. Still an issue. I don't think it makes sense. So how do you guys feel about us sending it back to the mayor, putting it back on, asking them to come up with a proposal for rectifying it based on the nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand and two study?
I was gonna just say, Brad, it's, it's looking for direction and I was gonna say that, you know, I guess come up with proposals, go out there and fix ten or twenty of those identified catch bases, verify that they need, come up with RFB to fix those ten or twenty and then go to the next batch.
And I, and I, I mean, I also think we should enforce the sewer rate. If there's, if there's code to charge people, if we are confident we could prove our case, then I think we should do it.
On the sewer rate for the?
Where they have the sewer rate, if you're confident. I mean, I think we should have been doing that for twenty years.
So are we okay with sending it back, asking the mayor and DPW to get back to us with a plan to rectify whether it's to take ten storm or, uh, catch bases at a time, but to come back to us with a specific plan as to how to address the issues that were already identified?
I'm in favor of that.
Okay? And we don't want to belabor this and be next year down, we're still having the conversation.
I guess I would just ask, Brad, do you think that that's a viable solution?
Um, to, you're, you're saying to identify some of the basins and sources that we know of on city property, um, stuff that's for us to fix and securing a contract with a fixed bill or fixing those in-house or what?
Well, maybe a mixed bag, but identify ten, twenty of them and come up with a plan to fix them.
Yeah.
How you do it, whether it's in-house or, I guess that would be for a later discussion, but true.
Some, some of them aren't an easy fix. I, I think some of, a lot of them, um, that we know about around city property that were, um, in, in a, inexpensive fix, I think some of those were done in the prop, in the, in the study. Now we have dead ends that don't have stormwater infrastructure on them. So very wild, a, a catch basin at the end of the street on a dead end that has no storms on it, it's tied into the sanitary. That's, that's a larger undertaking, you have to extend, you know, your, your stormwater infrastructure and tie it within.
But for next year, like, if you have a list of repaving streets and you have some of them identified on that before you repave them, you could address that problem as part of coupling it with that future repaving project.
Yeah, exactly.
So again, kind of coming back to us with, with a, a plan, um, I don't think I, can we get, based on that report, a listing of the city identifying issues, not, not property owners or anything, but could we get that list so that we have some ident, idea of the scope of it?
Yeah, I think I have it, I think I have it digitized.
Okay.
So I can send it out.
Okay, I appreciate that. So let's put this back on, um, you, it's gonna take you some time to get with the mayor and come up with the, the plan and stuff. I, well, I was gonna say a month. So did that, did you, ten fifteen will be? Okay. And then we can come up with kind of what, what the plan is.
Sure.
Okay. You got your exercise standing up and sitting down and stuff today, didn't you? Okay, reservoir cleaning inspections and mixers, I'm guessing you're on again.
Yeah. So hang on, let me grab my paperwork here. So we got the bulk for, um, the mixers. We had the bulk for the cleaning and inspection, um, that was twenty-four thousand. Uh, mixers for both tanks were sixty-two thousand. And the unknowingness is, we need to, this would be done in-house, the electrical, uh, service for the mixers needs to go, I mean, basically needs to be installed there so, so we can power these units up. Uh, that's an unknown expense, I have no idea what that's going to cost. But you're looking at eighty-six thousand for cleaning, inspection and mixers, um, install both of the reservoirs. Plus, plus the unknown.
And I, if I remember correctly, it did seem like our appetite to say do the whole thing was pretty high the last meeting we had, rather than to piecemeal things, but you guys can correct me if I'm off.
What was the difference in the price?
Twenty-four thousand. Twenty-four thousand for the cleaning and sixty-two thousand for the mixers, so what, eighty-six thousand altogether?
You said not dependent on the depth of sediment, right?
So the twenty-four thousand is, if, if we have more than two inches of sediment? Right. Then that price goes up. Now, we have no idea, uh, how much sediment could be in there. I, I don't feel like there's much, you know, if it's, I, I would be surprised if it's more than four.
I, I thought, I thought the, the scuba diver doesn't care about how much sediment there is.
He did.
We're not going with the scuba diver?
We're, we're.
Not sure.
Huh?
The low is cheaper.
Why didn't we not go with the scuba diver?
If you weren't here.
Who made that decision?
It's very, it's a council person.
Cause Vern is afraid he might take a lot of risks.
Because we were looking also at the mixers, I believe, and one of them, right, this, you can correct me, what?
Why didn't we go with those, why didn't we go with the steam?
Liability? I don't really, but I don't feel comfortable if we can send a, a robot in to do the same job versus a, a human.
Okay. So, um, looking at twenty-four thousand for the, the cleaning and inspection or eighty-six thousand cleaning inspection, mixers for both tanks with the unknown being the electrical cost. And you said that would be in-house?
We would do the electric in-house.
Okay. So other than parts and stuff, it would be? Okay.
So there's an unknown of the electric and there's an unknown of how much sediment's in the tank.
Can you send something efficient?
Alderman Robinson.
I mean, I, I used to deal oil tanks, but if I wanna know what was in them, I sound Bobberdome. Do some measurements, you can figure out where you're at.
I don't think, you know, there is a device that can tell you that.
Hey, Meg?
But these are so deep that, I don't think they're like.
But you can get up on, there's access hatches, right? Latt, and ladders, you can go up there?
You can go up there, yeah.
So I mean, a, a tape with a weight on it'll get you there.
Cause that's how the scuba divers get them.
Right.
Alderman Robinson.
I was just curious, uh, I mean, could the electrical, I know it's an unknown number, but is it safe to say ten grand, fifteen grand? And then as far as the extra, if it's over two inches of sediment, I think if we're gonna go with the eighty-six K, we should at least put in, uh, a, a maximum, yeah, thank you, a maximum number to cover both of those costs so that we're not being slapped with another twenty, thirty grand and go, oh my God, now we gotta come up with this. I mean, it just, if we just came back and said, okay, a hundred K or a hundred and ten K for the whole entire thing and then if it comes in under the rate, we, we, we got, we want to accomplish and we came in under budget, I think that would be great.
Right, yeah, no, I would agree with that.
And so the question would be funding. We talked, I don't remember if we talked briefly about it or not.
I thought we did and the thought was that they would come back with some thoughts on, on, we're, we're funding.
So the initial, the initial talk, if I remember correctly, was, um, I was talking about the urgency or the need, the greatest need here is the cleaning and inspection of tanks. Not to say that the mixers aren't needed, but we really need to get these cleaned and inspected. Uh, so we talked about using the contingency money, you know, twenty-three, eighty-five thousand out of contingency that hasn't been touched, there's seventy-five thousand in there now, um, to, to make sure that that gets done. Now, whether this can be done in the winter, I don't know. We don't really know if we can put out the reservoir during the winter. But.
Scuba diver's not going in there.
John, I think they bought you a scuba suit, so. Okay, so let's have some direction here because I, I think again, that's what Brad, go ahead.
Do we get, do we benefit of putting mixers in, Brad? Like over long term?
By any length of time?
Yeah, long term, is there a reason, is it worth spending money on mixers?
The mixers, um, improve water quality. So the chlorine residual stays better, it's not all evenly mixed. You, you don't have any sediment buildup like you, like you do now, uh, and you don't have, uh, you have to get the terminology.
Is that water treated before it goes on those tanks or?
Yeah. So you have like disinfection byproducts and things like that, that mixing helps dissipate those.
Okay, so I find we're, whether or not, uh, looking to just have the cleaning, an inspection or cleaning, mixers inspection. Alderman Robinson.
As far as the contingency use, that was water contingency, right? Is there, because this is all purified water, nothing in this category can come out of sewer?
Correct.
Okay. And then, so, I mean, I'm in, I'm in favor with moving forward with this. And, and that way we can at least get the cleaning done, uh, whether or not we can get snuck into the tail end of this season or if we end up having to do it in the spring. But if we do it in the spring, at least this will come back to light and then maybe we can find sixty-two grand, uh, at budget time. I don't know, but I think if we're gonna go in and do this, then we should go ahead and do it, go ahead and get both, uh, mixers put in along with the cleaning of both. Ignore the scuba diver, John, sorry, and, and just hope for the best with the sediment.
I guess the only thing I'm wondering, Brad, do you have an idea what kind of lifespan these mixers might give us to? And then you end up with another sixty grand or probably twenty years or maybe?
Six hundred.
I don't know, I don't, I have paperwork here, I don't, um, I don't know what, what the warranty is or what the life expectancy is.
I think we don't have one at all right now.
Right, right, we're, we're gonna add a cost, we're gonna leave her place, say ten years if we're lucky maybe.
It's a five-year warranty. The water tastes better, doesn't it?
The, 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 Brad, you don't.
But anyways, um.
So the water will taste better, is what I hear.
As long as the diver doesn't worry.
So.
Okay, so.
I'm in favor of putting in the mixers, I think our homeowners deserve clean, delicious water.
Okay, so, we were looking to take the twenty-four thousand out of contingency, uh, water contingency out of seventy-five. If we bump it up and we say eighty-six, and that doesn't include, uh, electrical costs. So if we plan for.
You can take the rest out of surplus, can't you? If you're only looking for eighty-six thousand, you can take twenty-five out. Can't you take the other out of surplus?
Do we, what do, do we have seventy-five in contingency?
We have seventy-five, so.
Yeah, I would.
There.
Because our surplus in water is.
Yeah, we don't have, we don't have a lot. I, I mean, it, it might be time to kind of tighten the belt on, on what we're spending on water.
So do you have a recommendation, John, then, of, uh, where?
No, you guys have the recommendation.
Oh.
No, no, no scuba divers.
So you're not.
No scuba divers.
Mixers now?
I know, I love that, I'm thinking, um, so the, the mixers, uh, were, there's a lot of words on here that I don't understand. Uh, but it prevents stagnation, it provides uniform water age, um, and distribution of disinfectant. So, uh, a lot of good stuff, but I just don't think we can afford it at this time.
So, Brad.
We're not.
Was, did it sound like there was any financial benefit if we, if we did it all together versus we came back and we did the mixers at another time, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So just saying that, I mean, if we planned for maybe next year to put the mixers in, we would have maybe some sediment, but not fifteen or twenty years of sediment.
Some of that, and some of that all package pricing too, or that idea was also not so much that one, as it was.
Valves. Yeah, pump stations.
The valve, the pump stations, and the motors and that, right, over at?
Right.
East Riverside, right?
You all that together, you're, you're gonna save some money.
That's, so the, really the all core shopping was, the main discussion was that one.
So I'm gonna recommend that we do the cleaning and inspection, and take that out of contingency, and look to put planning in the next budget year for the mixers.
So I just did add something that's.
Yes, you have. You have been so proud of it, you've been missing it.
And it's like, this is something that's gonna benefit the entire city, clean, safe water. We can find money to renovate parks, make roundabouts, and make only unblockable. I think we're avoiding a situation here, and we should find the damn money for the sixty-two thousand dollars this year and get it done at once. Whether we have a valve and bond it, or take it out of surplus, this should take priority. That's all I have to say, that's it. Clean water, in my opinion, is a hell of a lot better than a roundabout, or a swing at a park, or a dog park.
So.
So you're saying make only entry. Yeah, make only entry.
Well, it worded remade, but let's, let's be clear, when, when Brad's saying, he's not saying because the water isn't safe. Okay, it's rather that, they, he, that we may have some better taste.
But I don't have time to speed read Brad's report, but he did say that it's gonna make it more purified, the, the.
It's gonna make it more, um, mix, right, more.
The water quality goes up.
Yes.
Takes us.
Who cares what the takes, it's gonna be safer. Okay? So I think this should be, take priority of what others expenditures we're spending on, so it's only sixty-two thousand dollars.
Really?
We can find, we can find money for everything else.
Really, Dave? Dave, you have been sitting here for this last forty-five minute discussion, to weigh in at very last minute. So.
It's like the Twilight Zone. I'm saying not to spend money, and Mr. Moneybag's over here saying we should spend the money. Tonight's the Twilight Zone.
I, I mean, I see the need for us to always try and keep our belt tight, but there's part of me that thinks that it's not official, and regardless what comes of it.
So we've recircled around sixty-two times about which one, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask that, wouldn't it make sense then, Dave, you're, you're correcting what you said, but the money's not in the two funds right now, so instead of just bonding for that extra sixty-two, wouldn't it make more sense, Brad, next year, for you to put a bunch of those critical items in one project that can all be bonded for, and just collectively together to address a bunch of those cans that got kicked down the road?
Or, put it into the budget, and then when the water rates go up, Dave can vote no against that, and we won't have the money to clean the water at that time.
So, but I mean, seriously, just put together a, a big package of some of these projects, and then do that collectively.
Yeah, I think that, I think that's a good idea. There are, there are some things that, you know, like we just talked about, the valves at, at the well station, um, if you remember, we said that we had one pump there that was running, and the other two were inoperable. Uh, the one that was running went down, so I'm currently fixing one to get it back up and running.
And that's sort of to your point, Dave, if you're, if you're gonna spend sixty-two thousand dollars more on a mixer, that it's gonna mix the water quality better, or spend sixty-two thousand dollars to fix, which one's the higher critical need? Fix the valves and that stuff, pump station there. So if we're gonna spend that, that's what I'm saying. I'm agreeing with you, I'm just saying, take a bunch of those critical items, do it with one big five-year project, and get them done.
Okay, I concur, next.
Okay, so are we given direction to Brad? Are we saying yes to the dress, and saying, do the cleaning? Look to give us a proposal for the, um, most, triage, the most important projects, look to bond them, so that we can indeed look to do the mixers, but we know the valve, and the valve replacements, those runs are really important. So is that what we're saying? Just wanna make sure.
That's exactly what I'm saying, because the, the, the surplus across the contingency, if there's a failure on that, you'd be willing to fix it.
Right.
You want a cough this ready?
No, what, if there's extra sediment?
Oh.
Do you want like twenty-four, okay, transfer, or do you want?
Didn't they, did they give a per inch additional?
Fifty percent per inch over two inches.
So six thousand dollars per inch?
It's six thousand dollars for the sediment removal, and then the note says cleaning is based on two inches of sediment or less. Each additional inch of sediment incurs an additional fifty percent of the tank washout fee.
So does that mean fifty percent of the six thousand, or fifty percent of the twenty-four thousand?
Fifty percent of the tank washout fee is what's that?
Right, the tank washout fee says four oh two, but that, that four oh two is thinking that you're draining the tank, or not draining. So, I would have to, I would have to ask them exactly how much are we talking? Is fifty percent our, because we're doing it while it's online. The tank is full, we're sending a rover unit in, they're videoing, cleaning, inspecting the tank, um. You know.
But that, that maybe was for the rover system, right, Brad?
Right.
So if they were using the rover system, why would they think that we weren't draining it, or why would they think we were gonna drain the tanks?
Well, because both of them are quoted. So.
For draining in that frame.
Yeah. Both of them are quoted.
So really, can we give a quote then? I mean, we can't move forward or anything, because we don't have the.
Water.
Yeah.
So, can we just clarify then, what that fifty percent is, Brad, just so that we have a sense whether or not it's doesn't, it probably isn't the four oh two, but it probably, you know, half of the six thousand or something?
According to the quote, it's fifty percent of the four oh two.
Oh, like four oh two means four hundred and two dollars?
That's what the quote says.
Wow. Okay.
So.
That sounds good.
Two hundred dollars an extra per inch.
That sounds fair. So, can we agree to move forward with this, with the twenty-four thousand dollars plus an additional five hundred or something that might cover extra inch, inches?
Oh, there's two tanks.
Yeah.
Or just eighteen thousand?
So, for twenty-five thousand?
Yeah, let's just say not thirty, no.
Thirty thousand.
Okay. Not to exceed thirty thousand. Everybody in agreement?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Over that, we'll just transfer.
Okay, and that will come out of contingency, the water contingency?
The tanks, uh, Brad, the tank washout is not four oh two. The tank washout is twenty-seven hundred dollars. The tank disinfection was the four oh two.
So thirty thousand should still give up.
So it's every inch where we, half of the twenty-seven hundred.
What's that, thirteen fifty? So.
Yeah, so thirteen, one thousand and fifty per inch.
Okay.
Per tank.
Per tank. So if we said thirty thousand, we should probably come in with it.
Well, no, we're looking at, after we do the first tank.
I mean, you're, you're five, fifty-two hundred dollars if each tank had double the sediment. If each tank had four inches, you're only going up fifty, fifty-two or fifty-four hundred dollars.
So there's a, with thirty thousand, we fixed it, right? Okay. So, do we need to take any action other than to? Okay, so P L will be coming our way. Thank you, Brad, for all the answers and stuff. I know you were just waiting, right?
Sure.
It's you. Okay. I repeat for funding for the demolition of three sixteen Laurel and three thirty North Town. That you, right?
Yes.
All right.
Did you guys receive the, the note?
Yeah, that was. Yeah, let me pull that up. Oh, okay. Go ahead, well, I'm just gonna pull up that for me.
I'm giving to you, they rank from eighty-five thousand to a hundred and eighty-eight thousand for both houses.
So I'll just start questioning this. So the reason why they were so high is because, uh, they're projected, or is for just in case purposes of asbestos?
Correct, both have to be controlled demolition.
Controlled, thank you, controlled demolition.
Plus one to send a black house. That's less than two feet off the neighborhood, so.
And then I just wanna go on the record and say that that is an astronomical amount of money to turn down a house. I think I got some tenure, right, I can get that to take care of both of those buildings. That's what you're talking about there, the, the, yes, yes.
Remind me which bid was that?
You can have it.
Oh, thanks.
Street, but it's a reminder of your tax box, so.
Right, and that's what I was looking at. So one of them, one of the bids didn't have the ten percent guarantee, so it's like, there's really only two viable bids?
Yeah, only a hundred thousand.
Yeah. Now, what we don't see is, I'm guessing that everything is pretty comparable, or they both can be on there, right?
Yep, they both, they're on the same RFP, they both in bid bonds.
Okay.
They're both seventy-five.
Remind me, is this because they did come back positive for asbestos?
No, because of the structural collapse on both interiors, we can't get an asbestos survey area to test it. So if you can't test it, you automatically assume that there's asbestos, and you have to do a controlled demolition, which.
According to what? Is that, is that something?
Yeah, one fifty-six of D O L.
I mean, I'll go in there, I'll, I'll grab a sample, if that helps.
Okay. So.
With my scuba diver. Yeah, what about a drum? Cause you said there's no roof.
Correct.
Okay, so, we will, we will never leave here tonight, so just to remind us, so, we will be hopefully made whole at some point on this when we attach the lien to the property owners and such?
Yeah, there's rocks. There's nothing that's a guarantee. Yes, we can go get a judgment and go after them.
And, or if they have other properties, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's why I make sure.
But also keep in mind eighty percent of judgments are uncollected, so.
Saying there's a chance.
Yeah, you got twenty percent chance.
Good, man, I'm seven.
Okay, so.
The, the properties belong, they don't belong to the city, right?
No.
We can't force the homeowners to take care of it, they have insurance, they own the property. Why, why does the city have to step in and say, hey, we're gonna tear it down? They're not guaranteed that money.
The condition that they're in, and is, they need to come down. Um, we could set this off to the side and start prosecution, and hopefully they don't come down during prosecution.
They still won't make the city liable. It should be whoever owns it, and their insurance.
Yeah, that's a question for, for, I mean, whether or not.
Okay, so, yes.
Is there, Brian, is there a way through some of the other articles where the city could take ownership of them, and then I'm asking, because then if you, well, right now the city's gonna pay for it, we don't own it.
We don't own.
Let me finish.
Okay.
Then part of the us getting rid of it to somebody else is that it has to come down. So that way it could be done privately, privately at cheaper rates. When the cost's not on the city, it's on whoever is gonna now take ownership of the house, of the property.
Ideally, what you would do is, if you're gonna take it down, you would lien the property, have the county put it on a tax auction, super high lien against it, nobody bids on it, they do the two auctions, um, ninety days apart, and that piece of land will go to the land bank, never into the city's hands, and then the two neighbors would have the opportunity to split that piece of property.
But that's it, that's once the property was already taken down.
Correct.
I'm asking, before it comes down, is there a way to take the ownership and then to get rid of it? Like selling that West Oak Street house, that one of the provisions is that it must come down?
We could do a nineteen A against it, but we're still looking at a year, we're still jeopardizing that, in the meantime, the house is gonna come down.
That cinder block house is gonna come down.
Maybe the inside?
The inside's already down.
Correct. But usually what ties a cinder block house together is the interior structure. Essentially, think Joe, the interior floors that collapsed, that's when the wall started to go rotten. Even though it's all red.
So if it collapses, it's, it's not gonna hurt anybody, right?
There's some reason walking by.
It's just gonna be a eyesore, right? So, and it's, and it's not the city's property, so why are we spending eighty-five thousand dollars to tear something that we don't even own down? So I think you should prefer this to Jack Hart, and go after the property owner.
I mean, I agree with Dave.
What is happening?
Yeah, what's happening?
So. So.
This meeting is Jack Hart and Lawless.
So, well, what I'm hearing was asking for the city attorney was, it was another question, making sure that the city had no liability in this kind of, that it was all on the property owner.
Agreed.
Right, so we do need to have that
Agreed.
answer, particularly if we have identified a building that we, that should come down.
Right, and the other reason we propose is because the current prosecution we're going to. Right, and the only reason we propose is because the current prosecution we're going through right now are month number six. So if it comes down there those few times, that's what we're worried about.
Okay, so we need to also know from the city attorney then, um, put any potential liability on the city's part if the building comes down in the meantime versus the landlord's responsibility. Does that kinda summarize it?
Just prefer to vote Brown to Jack Hart and tell him to come up with an answer.
What?
Before the vote Brown to Jack Hart, tell him to come up with an answer, it's, it's, and he's probably gonna say it's not a problem, because it's on the city property, but.
So.
Get his opinion.
Okay, so we need to put this back on. What was that, um?
I said it should bring him to a meeting.
Okay, so we, so thank you for sitting here, and we're going to, um, defer this to having answers from our city attorney. And we need to put this on for our next meeting.
Yeah, cause I didn't know whether you're denying all the bids or if you're gonna accept them.
So I think what we're hearing is it's contingent upon what our city attorney tells us about liability.
I would agree with that.
So can we just table, right?
Yeah, can you just want a table?
Table.
Get that opinion, and then at the next meeting, you can know, tell me which way you want me to go, whether I'm gonna send denial of those to all three, or yes, we're gonna accept it then.
Do we have a timeline? That we're held to, to respond to the bids?
No.
I mean, I, I know, I know we don't wanna drag it, I mean, I know it's business practice, right, but is there like some sort of rule that like we must, you know, uh, within fourteen days or something?
No, the RFP is very heavily in our favor, that they have to complete work within ninety days.
Yeah, 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 okay. I mean, I'm not expecting to go out thirty days, but I mean, we may need a week to get, uh, some, some, some information.
Yeah, it's just gonna be a timeline and interpretation.
No, I make sure the RFP favors them.
Favor you. Awesome. I like.
Our favors the city, I'm sorry.
No, 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 I like, I like the way, the favors you, right? I like that.
We met you. Okay, so we're waiting on information from the city attorney. Okay, new referrals for consideration, none?
Motion to adjourn?
Nope, committee reports, gonna make some up, no. Motion to adjourn?
I'm gonna make a.
Yes.
Motion to enter executive session, discuss personnel.
Okay, and seconded by Alderman Robinson, all in favor?
Yes.
Huh? Remind you that at the last meeting.
Just for drawing motion.
Oh, wait a minute.
And we said something. I was wondering why you were giving a hand yourself.
I would throw a motion.
You and Dave, sounds good, thanks.
Motion, motion for Trump.
Okay, I make a motion to adjourn. Dave, right, and stage all favor? Pose.
Call to work, business operations, uh, like the record show that all members are present. I will make a motion for the approval of the previous minutes of August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
Second, thank you, John. Under unfinished business, I will make a motion to table it for a period of two weeks due to the fact that Jason and I have not been able to get a time to meet with Ben Sloman, as discussed in previous. All those in favor?
Aye.
For what?
The approval of minutes.
Do I know you don't like, I'll break this out. Somebody already did this. So, we'll just table that for two weeks, Tiffany?
Judge.
Thank you. New referrals for consideration? Committee reports?
None.
Motion for adjournment?
A second.
No.
No, John, I'm trying to take the session.
I was gonna, sorry, I was gonna go right through it, sorry, John.